All right, good morning. Welcome to Commissioners' Court. It's nine o'clock. Let's begin. If you'll stand, we'll have a prayer and a pledge of allegiance.
Lord, we thank you this morning, Lord, to come together, Lord, to do your business, Lord, to take care of the business of this county, Lord. I pray you be with each decision, be with each one represented here today. I pray that you'll be with all our first responders, Lord, across America today, Lord, and especially Tides County, Lord, as we deal with all the pandemic. And I pray you'll be with our law officers all across the county, be with each person, employee, keep us safe, Lord, guide us through this week. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're here today for our first regular meeting of the month. Today is July 13th, 2020, 9:00 a.m. We begin with item number one, our public comment time. Anything not on the agenda or any other comments you have for the court, here's your opportunity. I'll ask you to stand at the mic, and of course, you can address any other items that are in the agenda as well. All right, we'll move on to consider our minutes from our last meeting. That was three weeks ago, June 22nd, 2020.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve is made by Commissioner Parker. An approval by Commissioner Fitch. All in favor, say aye. Item number three is report from Commissioners on work on their roads. Commissioner Fitch, I'll start down there.
Okay, over the last couple of weeks, we've had storms pretty much every weekend. So I had several trees down from storms. And then actually, Friday night, we had some trees down out on the Mount Pleasant side of Bob Samuel Lake here on the road. Been mowing, and we're moving back over towards the west New Hope area, into that area this week. And during several days, we went out, covered potholes. We went out and paved over a few base failures that we had dug out and hardened up. And then we dug a few new base failures in some roads that we're getting ready for some chip sealing in the future. So.
Stayed busy. Okay, thank you. Commissioner?
We've been replacing culverts and preparing roads for seal coat, mostly trees. I don't know where the wind came from a couple of days, but other than that, it's been patching and working, getting the roads ready really for the summer. Constant battle.
Commissioner?
We've been side cutting and we finished it up, and then now we're mowing. And we've tore up a bit of road from 3260 to 3270, all the way around to, let's see, 3260, 32, 35, 33, 55. And we've run to the Argo Church and bethoned it in the dirt, got it packed back down to get it ready for seal coat. Got about six miles, seven over there that we've done. We're finishing up and down that part. And had a tree Saturday, but other than that, we stay in busy.
We, last week, we scabbed 40, 45 out behind a couple of stores. Got most of it done, and we've been installing some culverts over on 4315, getting ready to, probably going to start tomorrow, cutting ditches and ripping some of that road up and getting it ready to seal coat. And I've had my guy side cutting ahead of us on some of these roads that we're trying to get scabbed and all, ready to seal coat.
All right, thank you. Item number four, discuss entering into an interlocal agreement with Camp County to provide veteran services with possible action to follow. I was contacted by Judge A.J. Mason in Camp County a couple of weeks ago, and we talked about the possibility of Camp County providing veteran services for our veterans here in Titus County by expanding the responsibilities of the Camp County Veteran Service Officer. This is a lady by the name of Melissa Laurent, L-A-U-R-E-N-T. She works two days a week at an office provided by Camp County there in their courthouse annex. She works three days a week in Wood County, providing veteran services. And what they had talked about with her was enabling her to take some of the load from our veterans, Veteran Service Officer, take some of his previous responsibilities that Steve had provided, and send our veterans down there to talk to her if they needed assistance. She would not come up here and have an office. We would not provide her with anything. We would simply write a check to Camp County, and we would develop an interlocal agreement with Camp County. And they would expand her pay and, again, expand her responsibilities to include us. There are already some of our veterans that apparently utilize her, and she actually handles veterans from a variety of counties. However, it's primarily Camp County. And the figure that has been proposed to do this would be, I think it was $8,000, yeah, it was $8,000 per year that we would pay to Camp County. They would expand her pay down there. So we would not be paying payroll. We would be paying a flat fee to Camp County. They would handle her increase in pay and, of course, all of her benefits such as retirement. And so, again, this is something that came to me. The benefits of it are, we are still providing our veterans with someone that they can visit with for assistance, and yet, we don't provide an office here. There's no one on our payroll. It reduces the total amount that we were paying to Steve, which was some $17,500 a year for his part-time work, plus his payroll taxes and benefits. So, again, if you're wanting to consider continuing on providing veteran services to our veterans, here is kind of an in-between, doing nothing or having a part-time employee that did services through our local office here downstairs, similar to what Steve did. So at about half the price. Don't know what you're thinking along this line. I have had only a few calls since Steve resigned, so I don't know how much demand is still out there for this, but this is the only thing that I have come up with. And again, this came to me from Judge Mason.
I don't think at this time that we need to do anything. I think that this position is, right now, at this time, I don't think we need to do it.
Okay.
I'm the only veteran, probably elected in Titus County, to any elected office. And I have had a VA loan to go to college. I've had, I've got my pilot license. I've bought houses with VA loans. And you deal with it, and there's lots of people in this county that do the same thing. There's a few people. And the first thing, when I first got in the office, I recommended, we didn't need that job. I didn't see any need for it. But to make sure, I wanted to do it. So I wanted to find out all the facts and what had changed, because the last three months I was in the United States Army, my job was to separate and type papers to separate from active duty to reserve. So I realize the other Commissioners' Court is not guided, but I'm telling you, the first thing I found out was we rent building to workforce over here to a private company. When we raised, that's not where people go sign up for, they go over there to sign up for unemployment. But those are not state unemployment. The state has contracted to this company that we rent, that rented our building.
Does this have something to do with veterans? Does this have something to do with veterans?
And when I started, when I first started saying, we didn't need this, no, they have hired all kinds of private companies. And, I mean, they get, they pay them. The state pays them, or the veterans.
What does that have to do with Veteran Service Officer?
Why, everything that you go, you're going to have to go. All you can do is give them a number, and there's a lot of people that do it. It has nothing, we don't need the service. It's a waste of money.
Okay.
You create time. The only time.
When somebody calls and asks me, who's going to help me now that Steve is gone? Tell me what I should tell them.
First thing, you can give them my name. And if he can't, I can give you a list of names. We have people that carry, we have veterans that carry other veterans to the hospital and bond them. And we have lots of people that volunteer. It's been a total waste to me, and to replace that is absolute diswasting of taxpayers' money.
All right.
We also got Steve. He's still doing this. So I ran into him last week, and he said he's looking for an office so we could give him Steve's number. He'd be glad to help folks, and folks find the help when they need it. So I don't feel like we need it this time either.
Okay. Well, it sounds like there's our answer. What do you think?
I kind of got to go along with them, because Stuck said, we just lead a lot of people that help, and they're devoted, wants to help. And I had the pleasure to talk to somebody this weekend. They said that they'd help as much as they possibly can. So, but I, you know, still, I recognize any veteran needing any help, call anybody, just anybody on this court, the answer, talk to them.
Okay. Well, Al has offered to let me direct them to him. Again, I've not gotten a bunch of calls. I think I've gotten three calls. So for the time being, that's what we'll do. If you want to table this, no action, vote no, what would you like to do?
I make a motion, we don't replace the job.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Riddle to not replace the position previously held by Steve Austin.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fitch. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'm opposed to this. I like this idea. I'd like to continue to provide something, at least for the time being, until we saw how much need was going to be there. But I understand this, and maybe this would be a door that we could always open again if we decided we did need some help. So I think Melissa's been there for a while, and hopefully, she'd be willing to step back up should we feel that the need was still there. So that takes care of that. Item number five, discuss comp time limitations for precinct road employees with possible action to follow. Commissioner Fitch, you had brought this to me. Kind of tell us what you're thinking here.
Well, it's kind of a roller coaster ride in the summertime, spring and fall with a lot of trees down and such. And so, depending on who you can get a hold of, sometimes somebody will go 42, 45 hours in a pay period and have to take it off, and we're busy. So I was wondering if we could move that up to about 60 hours, just to limit it till we get through the summer months. And then the fall, a lot of people like taking off around Thanksgiving, Christmas, when it's less busy, where it don't need as many people, so.
Because right now, we've got a limitation of 40 hours, and what happens when your guys hit 40 hours?
Well, we just had, like I had a guy had 42 for a pay period or two. Finally, he had to be somewhere for a couple of days, and it went back to normal. But I hate running over and getting in trouble every time we turn in our time sheets and such.
What is your option when you hit 40?
Uh.
Send them home?
It just ends up being over, and the rule is, they want us to keep it at 40, and let people, you know, take off and make sure they manage their time better. But sometimes it's hard to. You have a bad week, and everybody runs up.
So you're suggesting we move that ceiling up to 60 hours? Allow your guys to accumulate 60 hours in comp time? And then that gives them a week and a half of time to use, or actually, that would be time and a half? So that'd be, 60 would become 90 hours?
Well, it's the 60 total.
60 total.
What they accrue.
What they accrue, yeah. So essentially, 40 becomes 60, and that way, you can send them on, they can take their time off during the slower parts of the year when you're not needing them as much.
Maybe move it to about 80 or 90, because we was out there one time. We had trees, spent all our weekend, you know, and our guys got 20 hours, and it was doubled in the end, so double the time to have. Because I got, I got two or three of them that need to have, take it, we don't have time to take it right now.
If you've been there a while, add up. So I might be good at 80 hours. I mean, just long as we keep up with it. I mean, they're going to have to work and go out.
Right.
I mean, we can't quit that. I mean, they're going to take the time sooner or later, and they have to take it, but it's easier for us to keep up with it without fretting over that 40-hour limit. I mean, 80'd be better, really.
Well, I, yeah, but I think you're going to get to the point of saying, you know, look, I'm leaving, and I'm going to take this, I'm not going to quit till March 31st, but I'm, this is March 1st, I'm going to keep on, I like having, I think we should have a limit, but I don't know where. But 40 right now is tight, but that's the only time it's tight because of the hours of sunlight and taking advantage. So I think that we should. I would like to, I think John's right. I think a 60, let's go to 50 or 60 and then see what happens.
And then we'll be riding at 70, 80 hour.
Right. I think that we.
It's time to do something.
The sheriffs have 80.
They had 40. I know they have to take off a lot.
But they.
40?
40.
And they go home. I mean, you send them home for a week.
That's, but they.
It's hard for us when we're so needy for our four guys.
I look at it, when, if you get called at 3:00 in the morning and picking up trees and stuff, you should be able to take your comp time when you want to take it, because they don't want to be out there in the middle of the night, but they are. But, you know, I just, that's our option, if you ask me.
Well, I don't, I don't think we should compare 80, because they can't take normal holidays, and they get comp for theirs is what is the reason, that theirs is different. But I'd like to go to 50 and see what happens, because we just barely play with it. Four hours over right now.
Yeah, just two, three, four sometimes.
It's not a.
Haven't been over 50 yet, but.
Now, you did have situations where they had lots of it before they put the limit on. I don't know when. You did that during the unit system, I think. I don't know when we put the limit on it, but it's, I think it's a good, a good deal to have a limit. And I know where the limit is. Like I said, I don't know. I'd like to start, and we could move it up, but with what John says.
How about 60? And then we'll try that and see how that does. That should.
And don't we have to do amendment to the handbook then, too?
Just for the road hands?
Yeah.
Oh, just for the road hands?
Uh-huh. We going to do it for the Sheriff's Department, too? What do you think?
The Sheriff's Department's already in there.
Oh, y'all are 80 now?
We did. I mean, that's what we're thinking about.
We thought of 40.
Over.
Yeah. Either one gets up to 40. Y'all are pretty good at it.
Handbook says 80 for sheriff's employees.
For law, 80 over law. But the handbook also says, when we reach 40, which was, we're going to have to pay them. Now, we can all have that, because we don't have a lot of legislation for overtime. So whatever number y'all choose, if we're going to stick with this handbook, then there's a few that are going to, you're going to do 60, there's a couple that are going to have to pay, because there are a couple of 60. Or we can have it in comp time.
I had, my guys just won't ball.
I'd just do the comp time.
We can do midday, maybe two.
Because they, they take, in the wintertime, you know, unless they have a big ice storm, most of them take off first week of deer season or something like that.
Would they leave us? Would they leave us? And we have 60 hours to pay if the road plate at their time, not the road plate in their car. Now, we're not giving races in the park, so it will not go down on me.
All right, what we're going to do?
Let's move it to 60.
Okay, motion is made by Commissioner Fitch to allow road employees of the Commissioners as a separate category to have a limit of 60 hours on their comp time, raising it from the current 40, and make an appropriate change to the employee handbook. Does that sound right?
And two, we're going to pay it over 60, because you're part of the pay period time to take off.
Yes. Is that just for road employees?
That's mostly the one that get the most time over is just employees, road employees. But accumulate that amount.
Okay, what she's saying, though, is that right now, the handbook says, if they go over that amount, they get paid. So are we eliminating that or leaving that?
I think we eliminate it. Take, you know, because they're going to, they'd rather have time off than.
Let's do it. Eliminate the pay.
Okay, so the motion from Commissioner Fitch is, we adjust road hand comp time limitation up to 60 hours at any given time, comma, remove the clause that allows for them to be paid once that is passed, and we make note of these changes in the employee handbook.
I don't think that's a good idea to get paid over, if they go over the limit.
I don't think.
If you start doing that, no telling, I mean, you're opening up Pandora's box. No telling what will happen, and people.
We're going to take that out. I'm not following you. What do you not agree with?
The pay.
After they get 50 hours, if they work more over that, or earn more comp time over that, they get paid for that extra time.
You want them to get paid?
No, I don't.
That's part of the motion, is they don't get paid.
Oh, okay.
Second.
I'm sorry. I left my hearing aid at home.
Second is Dana. Do you want to go over that, Joan, any of that?
I have a motion to allow road employees of Commissioners to have a limit of 60 hours comp time, and they, or and remove or eliminate the clause in the employee manual handbook.
Is that fairly stated? Okay. Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Item number six, discuss repayment of intercounty loan from the general fund to individual precincts by the end of a Commissioner's term with possible action to follow. I think this is something that we had agreed upon a few years ago, and Barbara and I talked about this, and so, I don't, I guess I'm just reminding everybody of that. Did somebody, anybody have a question about this? This, I think this was designed, or we had agreed upon this, to prevent anyone from borrowing and leaving debt with a new Commissioner. So we're discussing it. If there's any action, you can make a motion. As far as I'm concerned, we're just reminding everyone. Any comments, questions, motions?
Motion that we require them to pay off the debt by the end of their term.
On the record, Dan.
Okay. So let's just renew this commitment. Motion by Commissioner Riddle that any Commissioner repays intercounty loans, that's when we borrow from general fund, typically at zero interest in order to make purchases, and we're just committing here that we understand that those loans have to be repaid by the end of a Commissioner's term. So there's a motion by Commissioner Riddle.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fitch. All in favor, say aye. Item number seven, considering possibly approved, entering into an agreement with TechDOT related to the County Transportation Infrastructure Grant Program. As you'll recall, we were discussing this about six weeks ago. This was the new grant opportunity with TechDOT, and we had had some discussion about utilizing Allison Bass to help us with this, but this is the one that Commissioner Fitch submitted for us. And we knew that some of the counties in the state were not going to take advantage of this, and so that there might be some of their portion of the pie get plowed back into what was available for the remaining counties that did participate. So we did end up getting a little bit more than we had, well, we are eligible for a little bit more than we had originally anticipated. And that amount is up from about 150,000, some, low 150s, up to 173,513. So that was the good news. We get a little bit more than we anticipated. This is a formal agreement that we signed with the, with TechDOT, and this is a document that they have generated. This is the County Transportation Infrastructure Fund Grant Agreement. And this discusses what our obligations are. There's nothing really new in here, other, over and above what we knew in the beginning. But we are eligible for that amount, and we've already submitted projects that we will be working on to utilize that money with. This just documents our understanding of how we have to do it, and we're subject to have to give that money back if we don't handle it properly. So this will be, you know, will require proper bookkeeping in order to qualify here, so that as we begin those projects that we know we are working on with the use of these grant funds, we'll need to properly account for that and submit those expenses. So what I'm asking you to do is just approve signing this grant agreement with TechDOT for that 153,000. And again, that requires a commitment from us in the amount of 10%, and that's 19,279. So that 19,279, plus the 173,513, is that number that that 10% is based on. So that 19,279 would be 10% of about 192,790. Again, 10% of it is provided by us, and 173,5 provided by TechDOT.
The lady that's going to be over this program out of Atlanta is Kim Garner, who was our road engineer for Mount Pleasant.
Right, for a short time.
And I talked with her, and she said, once she gets this back, she'll review it and get back with us, and she'll tell us a date that we have 30 days to turn in a list, and I'll get the proper form to show a project that we want to spend that money on, which would be about 50,000 apiece with our 10%. So, and then she says, we have three years to do those projects, and then we get reimbursed for them after they approve it. After it's finished, they inspect it, we get reimbursed, so as everybody's happy. So I'll get that form as soon as she approves this, and we can talk to her. She has an assistant, Donna Barnes, there in Atlanta, and they can answer any questions in the future. And she says, we also can amend that form at any time. If we couldn't get this road finished with enough work, we might switch to another road or another project to approve, you know, the use of this money. So I will have some more information from her when she gets back from vacation.
Would you anticipate we would spend this, any of this money in this year?
It could possibly do. If we get this approved, turn in some list of maybe just seal coating, and put down that material, that oil and that gravel for about five, six, eight miles, something that shows that we did more than that 50,000, and then take them out there, you know, in the fall and show them. It could be done this year.
Do we have to stick with the road projects that you previously submitted?
No, we can change them, just use one of them. We can put a new road. We can change them, and then we can. them, and then we can change them at any time for the next three years till we get this money. So we prove that we spent that much money to them on a road.
It'd be best to spend this money within the next year, just so we're not having to drag this out and remember.
Try to get it done.
Remember all the requirements to go along with this.
So it may be a week or so before I get the form, the original form that we fill out to give her and put down some projects on there. I figure just put down plenty of projects to prove we're gonna spend that much money, and then they can come out and say, oh, yeah, you did it, sign off on it, and then they will, they'll send our monies to the county.
Okay, so I'll.
So if one finishes before, you do your 40, you know, your 49,000 worth or something, they'll send that to the county, and that can go in his account. We'll have a line item in our budget with that amount on it for when that money comes in, to keep up with what we're spending, and we'll get with Barbara and keep up with the receipts. We, they have to see receipts and such too, so.
So with approval today and my signature, we'll fax this and mail it over to them today?
And then she will approve it when she gets back, and I'll get the form to fill out our projects. And I'll learn some more information, I'll just keep sharing. We can call her at any time, too, if you've got some questions. She's, it's new to her, too, so she's like, we'll work through this, and we can get this done, so.
Judge Lee.
Ma'am?
I want to let the commissioners know we have a separate fund for this. It won't be within your regular budget, it will be a completely separate fund, as a number, because it would require to keep that separate. My understanding is that the max that we're gonna have to make is $19,000 or so, Judge Lee, for perfect, is separate funds that you already have in the budget. So you'll see that your budget is reduced, because we have the line, that line will be a separate fund. When I get that all set up, I'll have it in the next commissioner's court, where I have to approve. I'll send it to you, so we'll go over and make the pledge.
I couldn't. All right, sounds good. Just need a motion.
To make a motion, we entered into this agreement.
Motion by Commissioner Fitch that we enter into this agreement, sign it, submit it to Tech Dot.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that document is signed. Item eight, consider and possibly approve Shirley Dickerson, our chief appraiser at the county appraisal district, as the designated person to calculate the no new revenue tax rate and the voter approval tax rate. These two new phrases, describe the previously used terms, we call that the effective tax rate, is now going to be called the no new revenue tax rate, and the rollback tax rate is now going to be referred to as the voter approval tax rate. Shirley has calculated this for us in the past. The new law requires that we designate someone, and we could calculate this in-house, but it makes sense to me that we allow Shirley to continue to make these calculations for us. Barbara, you have any comment on that?
Make a motion, we approve her.
Motion is made by Commissioner Parker to approve Shirley to make these calculations for us.
Second.
Second by, I didn't see who said, second Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number nine is approve oral and written reports. Barbara has provided you with that before the meeting. Motion is made for approval by Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye. Item 10, consider and possibly approve our treasurer's report, which has also been provided for you.
I'll make a motion.
Motion for approval, Commissioner Riddle.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye. I'll hand you these two documents for your signature. Item number 11 is our budget amendments. I've got several. I'll begin with number 23 and go through number 29. The only one that involves new money will be the HAVA grant. As you recall, we agreed to provide about $3,000 worth of funding on that to enable us to get those grant monies that Pam had told us about a couple of weeks ago. Other than that, these are reclassifications. These, number 23 is, relates to adjustments within the budget for Commissioner Precinct One. Number 24 has to do with inter-account adjustments for Precinct Two. Item number 25 relates to Precinct Three, and item number 26 relates to Precinct Four. Again, making adjustments between the variety of accounts, such as road materials, shared road oil, steel, roller, rental. Item number 27 is an adjustment to current year budget for revenues and related expenditures based on revenue received from the grantor agency. This was, well, which one is this one, Barb? Chapter 19. Those were Pam's funds that were supplemented to enable us to only have to ask for $2,900 out of our budget. And then item number 28 is that HAVA cares grant, where we are transferring to that grant $2,999. We're pulling that out of contingency. Item number 29, this is where we had to add money from contingency for the, for our security fund. We were not able to pay that budgeted item that we had from Newman Electronics, as you'll recall, about $10,000 of that. We were out of money in the security fund and had agreed to reimburse that security fund before we draw any more from it over the coming months. So that's 23 through 29, if you want to see any of those.
Make a motion.
On 23, we got the steel roller rental, and it was 5,400, if you're looking at that, decrease to contingency. I don't understand it, probably what that means.
That's just.
Amount of amendment was 5,400, and to decrease it to contingency. Is it all going to be charged to Precinct One?
That's a, there's just a reason now, that read the whole thing, the reason for amendment, but that's.
I can't, I didn't hear, I can't hear, I left my hearing aid.
Okay, read that reason for adjustment there on the right column, if you'll read that.
Yeah, decrease to contingency.
Per request of Precinct One Commissioner, this is based on his plans to pay off all debt owed to the general county and to allow an adjustment to line items, as noted, with an offsetting decrease to contingency.
I remember the wrong name.
No, you're on the, you're.
He's reading it straight across.
Yeah, I'm looking, I'm reading this portion over here.
That's totally different from what that line.
I'm not sure what he's asking.
He's, it says, he's 5,400.
Yeah.
It's got to decrease, decrease to contingency, and it's not having anything to do with that line right there.
It's for all the lands, that's her explanation for all the, all the, her explanation for all of the amendments there.
Hey, would you hand that mic over there to Barbara, please?
Mr. Riddle, my understanding is that three commissioners are going to be paying for the steel roller rental. It's 5,400 to you, to Mr. Applewhite and Mr. Parker. Now, would you see right there where it says decrease to contingency? That's the last clause of that entire sentence. Everything that's in that column is one sentence. So that's where, that's, I think that may help you understand that. Does that make sense?
Yeah, thank you, yeah. Appreciate it.
Any other questions or comments, or you want to look at any of these budget amendments?
I think I have one more question, actually. You read that aloud, but I do want to know that Mr. Riddle is going to be paying off his loans to the county for Precinct One this year, not next year. Just wanted to know that.
It'll be in this budget year before 9:30.
Yes, sir.
All right, what's your pleasure?
Make a motion.
Motion to approve these budget amendments is made by Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number 12, sign pay orders, approve payment of our current bills.
Make a motion, pay our bills.
Motion for approval for item 12 is made by Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye. Item number 13, closing comments, if any. I'll begin at the table. Commissioner Fitch, any closing comments?
I'm good.
Okay.
I have none. I have none.
Let's see, related to anything besides COVID, that's all I'm thinking about these days. We've got, first of all, you got one, you got a voter day tomorrow, election day, 7 to 7 on Tuesday, reduced number of polling locations, the Civic Center, due to the COVID closed down of the Civic Center, if you voted in the Civic Center previously, you'll vote at the Ag Extension Office instead, Ag Extension Office. Anything else you want to mention? Okay, that's tomorrow, 7 to 7. Over the weekend, additional COVID cases, eight yesterday, 11 on Saturday, only one Thursday and Friday. So we seem to be adding about as many as we're having recover, maintaining somewhere around 300 active cases, at least according to the calculations, probably are more, considerably more than that out there. Tomorrow, at the Civic Center, in the Walnut Room, they will have another walk-up test day, 9 to 4, and that will not require you to pre-register, you will not have to have symptoms. So if you're wanting to know whether you've got COVID or not, Janice, you'll need to come up to the mic if you want to talk.
Okay. How long are you thinking that these test results are taking?
I think seven days.
Well, we better think again if we go through that out there at the Civic Center, okay?
What do you want me to think about?
That I did it, and it's over two weeks. I mean, you know, and you get no call back.
If I had any control over it, I'd have 15-minute results for you, but I have zero control over it.
That's what I already know.
This is, and, and you need to know how much time we've talked about this particular subject, and just as a little bit of explanation, it is simply the load on the number of labs that are available, and I guess you get what you pay for. A free test gets you about a seven-day result. I personally don't feel like that's real beneficial information to us. That's my personal thoughts. Those that helped me on our daily conference call leadership group feel like it's prudent to not tell the state no when they offer you testing.
Right.
To me, it produces more confusion than anything else, and it continues to drive our numbers up, but I do get a lot of calls and texts and emails from people that can't afford these tests, that want these tests, and they're willing to get tested and wait for seven days. I think everybody always hopes it's going to be quicker. We did see some turnaround of about four and a half days at the last one, but only a very few people got results that quickly. The vast majority were seven to eight to nine days.
Have you realized, though, that people going through this and get the results, I do, you're just encouraging more of the bad, more bad instead of good, if they can't produce what they're saying? Because when you have somebody standing there in camouflage uniforms and saying, oh, yes, you'll get results in 48 hours, and you're sitting there 14 days later and you get nothing, that drives fear, and I'm wondering if that's the whole idea anyway, you know what I mean?
Nobody at any of these walk-up has ever quoted 48 hours.
No, they're quoting that, they're saying.
No, they're not.
They are.
No, they're not.
I was through that, I heard that, and others did, too. That's the reason I say, are you aware of what they're saying? And that's scary.
I was up there, I talked to them myself, so maybe they told you that, maybe they told you that, they were in error, they were not the ones that were the boss man on site. If they promised 48 hours, that was absolutely ludicrous, and it was not achievable. So we won't get anything in 48 hours. We're doing good to get 48 hours through our local doctors' offices, and the hospital is getting 48, 72 hours.
Are you scared?
I hope it is.
I've got a, a deal that, a guy was talking to me the other day, his son come in with feeling bad, they went to Texarkana, I don't even know where, he never did tell me exactly where it was at, but they had the, the test done in 15 minutes, they, they give them the results. It's some, some testing site in Texarkana.
If you will go back and ask him where that was, I will tell you that, he didn't mind me using his name, Brian Hebner and I talked, he and a group of people that were concerned that they had been exposed, went to Texarkana, and yes, they got very quick results. Problem was, they checked in about 11:30 in the morning to say, okay, we're here, and they got tested about 6:30 that night. And then they headed home and did get their results fairly quickly, within, within an hour or two, but they had to sit there for the whole day.
This guy that I was talking to, him, his wife, and his son all went. His son has come back positive, and they, him and his wife were negative that day. They sent them home, quarantined for two weeks, and went back the following Monday. Yeah, they went on Monday and then went back two weeks later on Monday. All three of them tested negative. So, and they wasn't down there hour and a half, two hours at the most.
You know what they paid?
He told me that they didn't pay anything. He said now.
They might have had insurance, and some insurance treats it differently. A friend of mine went to Longview a week ago Sunday, because he had to know that day, and he paid $400, and he did get quick test results, and it was negative, and it gave him the peace of mind that he needed, but at a, at a high price. Now, again, I don't know what individual insurance takes care of, so it's a frustrating process any way you look at it. It's expensive, it's inconvenient.
That's one thing that I asked him, I said, what did this cost? And he said, didn't cost us anything. He said, both times we were down there, we walked in, they done their, their thing, and we walked out, and they never asked.
He didn't have to wait a long time. Maybe they, maybe this other group just went on a bad day when there was a lot of people showing up, so. Well, yeah, if you'll find out the name of that place, I'll put that information out there. Usually people call me if they, if they are in dire need for quick results. The hospital here does have a Well, yeah, if you'll find out the name of that place, I'll put that information out there. Usually people call me if they, if they are in dire need for quick results. The hospital here does have a new piece of equipment that was gotten through a star request with Texas Division Emergency Management. They now have that capability for quick testing, however, they are reserving those precious few tests for healthcare workers and emergency situations within TRMC. So we do have that quick test ability here, and maybe in the future, as the demand goes down, that will be more available to the general public, but that's, that's something new within the last week and a half at the, at the hospital. So, yeah, Janice, I agree with you, it's a, it's a frustrating process, and it's. That's why I'm not a big proponent of these free tests.
No, I mean, you try it out to see, after, I mean, this testing at the civic center, I didn't realize what it was, I mean, I've never went to a free day office and stuff, and you show up, you get 10 military guys, two working, and you know, some kind of infantry or something else, you won't get into that either.
Well, it hadn't scared them completely because we've bombarded them and far exceeded their expectations of testing here. So one, I say, keep saying, one more test opportunity, may not be the last one, but you have one tomorrow. It's all I have.
Make a motion to adjourn.
With your motion to adjourn, are you rushing me? Motion to adjourn, Commissioner Parker.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Fitch, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all.